Aloha. I want to call the Joint Committee on Higher Education, Agriculture, and Environment to order. Today is Friday, January 31. I know it's not my birthday. I don't know why people think it's my birthday today, but it's not my birthday. I know, I should have gotten toffee, but I didn't get any. We are here to take up four joint hearings today. And I'm going to introduce our members for the HRE Committee. On my right is Senator Fukumago. And that's all. Senator Kidani is on her way. And I will let my co-chair, Senator Gabbard, introduce his members.
Senator Rose here. So Senator Decoit.
Yeah, and entering is Vice Chair for Higher Education, Senator Kidani. So with that, we're going to begin. Oh, I need to state that this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Tuesday, February 2nd, in room 229, at 3:00 p.m. We do have a two-minute time limit for testifier. And so when you hear a little alarm, that means your time is up. And we would ask if you could summarize your testimony.
We have a trap door there, just in case.
Yeah.
Go over time.
I was going to say a hook. The hook. Or, you know, with AI, maybe some electronic little zap. Okay. With that, we are on Senate Bill 1232 relating to wastewater. It establishes a three-year new wastewater technology testing pilot program within the University of Hawaii Water Resources Research Center. And this will test and evaluate new wastewater technology systems in coordination with the University of Hawaii Sea Grant College Program, College of Engineering, Department of Health, Department of Hawaiian Homeland, and appropriate county agencies. It requires reports to the legislature and appropriate funds. So our first testifier, and we have two, four, or five people testifying today, for the Department of Health, Environmental Health Administration, followed by Kali Watson for Department of Hawaiian Homeland. Go ahead. Yes, you're first.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm John Nagato, on behalf of the Department of Health. The department stands on its written testimony in support of it. Thank you.
Okay. Kali Watson? Anybody here from Hawaiian Homeland? Well, they are in support. Representative from UH Water Resources testifying for the University of Hawaii? In support. Ted Boland? Oh, you're on Zoom. Sorry about that. Okay. This is UH?
WRC.
Hello? Can you hear us?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you introduce yourself?
Oh, hi. Thank you, Chair. My name is Drew Wong. I'm an assistant professor with UH Water Resources Research Center and also College of Engineering. I'm here to support the testimonies that submitted by the University of Hawaii on establishing this testing center. I think this is a great platform for education, research, and also accelerating the adaptation of new technology in wastewater treatment in Hawaii. And I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ted Boland?
Thank you, Chair. Chair Kim, Chair Gabbard, Vice Chair Kidani, and members of the committees. Ted Boland, on behalf of the Waikiki Reef and Ocean Coalition. This is a very good and important bill. It would provide the cesspool owners who are going to convert with the possibility of new technologies that are less expensive. UH has expert keys. Used to have a program in studying the new technologies. It closed a few years ago when Roger Babcock left. This would be a fairly small appropriation. I hear 750,000 or so to restart that program. And with that program, with UH studying the new technologies and providing that information to the Department of Health, we can get some new technologies that may be cheaper. So when Hawaii has to do 83,000 cesspools, this has the potential to pay for itself many times over. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Stuart Coleman?
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. My name is Stuart Coleman from Vi, Wastewater Alternatives and Innovations. And this is a bill that we've been pushing for. As Ted mentioned, when the testing center closed down after Roger Babcock left to work for the city, we don't have any way of introducing new technology and getting it approved because the Department of Health doesn't have the bandwidth. And so this would restart that program. And the good thing about it is that it's pretty much, once it gets started, it will be able to kind of pay for itself because the tech providers who want to come into the state and provide their systems will pay for the testing. And so this testing is based on National Sanitation Foundation standards. But those are really expensive. It can go up to 500,000 on the mainland. And so this is using graduate students and oversight. They can do the studies and the testing. And we've already gotten tentative approval to use the Wahihua wastewater treatment plant as a testing center. So again, that whole aspect is, the importance is providing more affordable technology. And that's also better for the environment. Mahalo.
Thank you. Jacqueline Ambrose, also in support. Anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure? Anyone on Zoom here to testify? If not, members open to questions. Go ahead. Senator Decoit.
UH Water Research Center? So UH, how much do you estimate this three-year wastewater technology pilot program would cost?
So we had a draft budget for about 750K for three years. That's about 250 per year. Most of it goes to personnel for project management. There is funding for graduate students, researcher, and also some lab supplies for conducting the actual testing.
So to what extent your research that is already done or ongoing relating to wastewater technology systems?
To what extent? Sorry, could you?
So what have you done so far? And to what extent that you guys have gone already to doing the research?
So this testing center is not really focusing on research because it's more of a service that we provide as WRC to help the state to certify new technologies. So it will be incoming new technologies from the company that asked us to certify the water quality, for example, coming out of these treatment processes so that we can accelerate the adaptation of these new technologies in Hawaii. So it's not really related to research that we're currently doing at UH. Does that answer your question?
Somewhat. So is anybody else outside of you guys actually doing research on it? And are we being repetitive? Not research, but are we being repetitive on some of the stuff in technology to address this issue?
I don't think so. Because each of these technologies are coming from individual companies. So they are responsible in developing these technologies. We're more of a third-party institution in testing their performance, basically, and evaluating at a local wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Follow-up questions. So $750,000 for three years? Or is it 750,000 each year?
It's total for three years.
For three years to do this? Okay, what happens after the three years?
So after three years, this platform will be established. And hopefully, we can have the incoming company with new technology will pay for their own testing procedure to fund this center.
Okay. In one of the testimonies, it says, "University of Hawaii Water Resource Research Center had previously had a testing program for wastewater systems." When was that?
That was before I joined UH. I believe it's Dr. Roger Babcock that was in charge of that.
About when? How long ago?
That was before 2021, I think.
Okay. And when the person left, then the testing stopped? Is that what happened? I mean?
Yes.
So is our programs based on individuals? Or is based on having a program? How does that work?
So before, it wasn't really an official program. So Dr. Babcock was doing this courtesy or also as a service to the state to provide this testing and certify it, and then providing data to the UH so that they can approve this technology.
Okay, so maybe I can ask the UH. Is the UH here? So since the close of the, what have you guys been using for data or anything?
So he's referring to the National Sanitation Foundation standards. There's, Ann Arbor, Michigan has, is where NSF is. They do the testing. And in our rules, we specify that we need the results from them or a university. So like you were saying, Roger Babcock. From what I understand, and I knew back in, or as early as the late 90s, he was doing it, like he said, as a service to the state and then figuring out the funding. So he could do it. Other, you know, established universities could do the testing according to the NSF criteria. But like everybody's saying, since Roger has left, there has been kind of an absence of the capabilities at University of Hawaii.
And you folks didn't pursue it or just?
I'm, I'm not. I'm not sure. We probably were trying to, but like I said, I've been only at the branch for a few years myself. So I'm sure they were trying to, but, you know, hard to get qualified. And then I think WRC had to fill that position too, the director position as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Senator Kidani, followed by Senator Favreau. So what were some of the sites where the testing was done?
So I know that San Island was one of the sites they were taking some systems down to. And then they're pulling off raw, they need to pull off the raw wastewater and then run it through the system that they're going to test. And then, you know, check what it is coming in, what is going out. And they run that test. I think it's usually like a three- or six-month test.
And how were the sites selected? I mean, was there specific things that they were looking for that is done differently in the sites?
From my understanding, because when I would read the reports, you need to find somewhere that can provide consistent domestic wastewater of a specific total suspended solids and biochemicals. So at the wastewater, at San Island, it's probably even worse because it's coming from Kualoa. It's like really, really bad TSS. But these systems are coming. So you're kind of taking even a little bit worse than it would experience at a house. Any, you know, most of the wastewater treatment plants in the counties.
So is there a report on what was found or?
Yes.
This is completed?
And we have a few of the reports for the aerobic treatment units that were submitted. And that's what they would submit to the Department of Health in order for us to certify what they used in the state.
I'm not sure if the Senate Committee has been given any reports, but it would be interesting to know.
These are like, oh, yeah, they're either like back in, like I said, the early 2000s, some of the late 90s.
Nothing's been done since then?
No, no, they have. I, like I said, I've only been in my current role for the last year. So, but we can get you examples of it. It's National Sanitation Foundation is the criteria. So whether it's from the University of Hawaii or NSF in Ann Arbor, it's, the report will look the same. That's, they're going to follow that same criteria. But the amount of time, the tests that they do, what kind of wastewater they're testing for.
But I guess my concern is that we're different from the mainland. We're an island state. And how we get our water is probably different from the mainland.
The affluent is still a domestic characteristic. So as long as that, they have a starting point, it's the same as most states. It's not significantly different. The wastewater coming out of our toilets and kitchens are pretty much typical domestic wastewater. 250 BOD per kilo.
But it's not, I mean, I guess, are there standards as to how far it is away from how we get our drinking water?
Those standards are in our current rules, in our current Hawaii administrative rules. They're just talking about the quality.
Thank you. Senator Favreau?
So you said early 2000s is when you guys had the last testing?
Oh, no, not the last. Just what, I used to be on the private side.
The reason why I ask you, because there's a lot of things that done since the early 2000s because I used to work for the company that was billing out, billing out the plant because we had to go through the secondary treatment. My concern is, you guys requesting, I see you guys requesting, this body would request to shut down certain cesspools over a certain amount of time. And then that thing went to the county to get things done. What is the actual data? I don't know if you guys have them. I know you guys shorthand it. But is there any way you can, they don't want to share it with the body? What kind of exactly Clean Water Act testing that you guys had with some of the communities with their contaminating ocean? I know Senator De La Cruz had introduced this, and I think it's a good idea. But I just like know what is the scientific data. Because my community, we have a lot of cesspools. And not one of them, from what I heard through the Clean Water Act, is entering our freshwater or any other water source. But guess what? We're the first community that they're coming to. So I just wanted to know, what can you guys do to give data to city? Even though maybe we've got to change something about the law? When they're going to change them into sewer, sewer fees? Our community is 80 and 90 years old. I don't know how they're going to make these guys pay for the second, you know, for tying into the sewer. That's my concern. So if you guys have this kind of data, can you share it with us? And then let the county know that, you know, our community is not a threat.
You're referring to the Sewer Improvement District?
Yeah.
Great, okay. So you just want to know what data we would have specific to that area?
To push, I mean, right now, they're doing our area because our area is flat and we have a treatment plant. But that shouldn't be the one that we doing them. It should be a reason that the Department of Health think Ever Beach should do them because of this, 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 our freshwater. This, this, this is contaminating our ocean. Because we have homes that is closer to the ocean. But that's not a means to work on that. So that's the reason why I'm asking for the numbers so that I can share with wastewater treatment and Honolulu to change their approach on doing this. Because you've hurt a lot of families in my community.
So you want data to explain what their decision was to select that community over another community?
If it's not coming from you guys directly, because they're saying Department of Health. So I want to know if it's a health risk, we'll ignore how high the risk is. And we're the highest risk in the state. You know what I mean? Because there's other areas, Papua Kuaia, North Shore, you know, have a lot of issues going forward. So I just want to get some kind of idea so I can advocate for my community.
I'll get back to you on questions.
Thank you. The guy from the university? He's a student?
A student. Cam? He's a 10? John?
How's it? Again, I just want to know, you know, for you guys testing or you guys going to be, I guess, moving with this grant, the 700,000? How accurate is you guys' method and data that you guys are going to collect from? And again, I just could be biased, I'll use my community. How you can detect on Koiki Street, when we flush the toilet, that Puula Beach Park is kind of getting contaminated from that water? How are you guys going to be able to collect that data? Because if that's the case, our water would be much more worser than what Pearl Harbor is contaminating our water with. So it'd be really good to find out instead of Pearl Harbor contaminating, because we got data that Pearl Harbor is polluting our water. That's why they would put the oysters. But I want to know, with so many hundred homes that is in every state, how much of those homes, I don't know if you get the answer now, but I'm just saying, I know how accurate it's going to be to say that all of every state is contributing to pollution in the ocean. Because right now, we don't have that. It's just going by because we made a law pass here to make sure that everybody's on sewer line at a certain time. But I don't think that is fair to some of the communities that cannot afford it if it's not causing an environmental or health risk to the community.
Yeah, well, I think to answer your first question, I think our testing will follow national standards, right? So there will be proper quality checks to make sure the data is accurate and will be shared openly. And then the second, the second thing you mentioned was on the water quality issues and also equitability to different communities. I think these testing center actually will bring down the cost of certifying new technologies because eventually that comes to the users, right? For any new technology to be adopted. And then we're doing this testing at a much lower cost than the National Science Foundation, sorry, National Sanitation Foundation on the mainland. And also appropriating to island communities. And then I think this is our effort in trying to make it at a lower cost so that more households can replace their cesspools with new technologies that are cheaper.
Okay, just one follow-up, and I'm done. So allow to build any extension on your property in my community. You have to put in a septic tank with a leach, a very expensive 40,000, $50,000 upgrade for septic tanks. Now, they went with the new technology that they have. So I agree with you. We should have the best technology going forward, and that was one of the options. But the city and county said that they're going to condemn those septic tanks and force them, after spending 40,000 to 50,000, to tie into the sewer line. So if you're talking about having all the tools in the chest to be able to work on, how are we going to make sure that those technologies is adequate enough? That's all. I mean, you don't have to get back. Maybe I can get it offline. I understand we have a lot of stuff. But I'll talk to Senator Kim. Try reach out to you, talk to you a little bit more.
Yeah, if you can get that information to us because we have a 3:00 clock of education and we're going to corral at 3:00. So anyone else?
Thank you.
Questions on this matter? Before we go on to the next one, I want to make the statement. And I noticed, especially for the agencies and for University of Hawaii, you folks always put this language in, you support it as long as it does not surplant priorities or requests outlined either in the governor's budget and the BOR budget. But let's be real, you guys, the money's got to come from somewhere. So perhaps next time you testify in support of something, which is great. We appreciate you coming by. But tell us where you think that money should come out of. You know, whose budget? If it's not out of your budget or your plan, then where should that money come from? Because the buy is only so big, and we only have so much. And so what are the priorities? Do we cut student housing? Do we cut seniors? What do we cut in order to go ahead and put stuff that you're supporting because it wasn't in the budget originally? Okay? Okay, moving on. We are in Senate Bill 686 relating to Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle Program. Establish a short-term management initiative for the Coconut Rhinoceros Beetle Response Program. Appropriate funds for activities and positions relating to coconut rhinoceros beetle infestation control. And speaking first, this is Shepherd, Department of Ag. Not here, next? Oh, online? Go ahead.
Chairs, I'm Ricardo Kim and Gabbard, Vice Chairs Kidani, Richards, and members of the committees. My name is Cameron Fujimoto. I am with, I'm the acting pest control branch manager for the Hawaii Department of Agriculture. The department stands on its written testimony in strong support of this measure. I'll be available for questions that you may have. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Robert Hoff? On Zoom? No, Robert Hoff. No, okay. University of Hawaii. Harwinder? Graywall. How can you pronounce your last name?
Graywall.
Graywall, okay.
Thank you, Chairs and Vice Chairs, for the opportunity. And we stand in strong support of our written testimony for this bill. As you know, CRB is a major issue. And our federal funding is at risk moving forward. So we really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are here to answer any questions.
Candace Park?
Good afternoon, Chairs, members of the committee. We've identified two constitutional concerns. We recommend identifying the bill as a law of statewide concern and also inserting standards to cover the two subsidies that are proposed by this bill. And I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Fern Holland? Felicia Calden? Councilmember for Kauai County Council in support. And we have a bunch of others. Stephanie Easley?
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of the committee. My name is Stephanie Easley with the Coordinating Group on Alien Test Species. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. We submitted written testimony in support of this bill, which you have. I just wanted to take a few seconds to highlight a part of this that the state funding is the way that CRB response can provide its services on all islands. The federal funding comes with strings. And, you know, they've lost, a lot of the federal funding is not going to be continued because it's no longer an emergency response. But the state funding will allow them to respond on all islands to CRB. We asked in our testimony that the island of Kauai be added to the list of islands where CRB response could respond, on page four, line five, and also on page five, line five, if the committees find that appropriate. And I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Is that in your testimony?
Yeah.
Amendments?
On the top of our second page, we asked for page four, line five, to the list of islands. But then I'm also suggesting page five, line five, under the appropriation of funds, or the appropriated funds can be used on any island, including Kauai.
Okay. Perhaps you can get that language to our staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. We have someone on Zoom. Krista Lay? Are you on Zoom? Welcome, Krista.
Hi. Thank you so much, Chair. I'm testifying as a resident of the North Shore. I strongly support this bill in regards to the CRB infestation. CRB has had a massive hit to our coconut trees, royal palms, banana plants, as well as important native plants. This bill is a great step in the right direction, but a much larger scale initiative is needed. The funds that are in this bill is a small in relation to how much this will cost. I personally have 64 royal palms that are about 50 to 60 feet tall. And they were a gorgeous asset to our home and property. Currently, it will cost us $3,000 per tree to cut them down and dispose of them. That's a total of $192,000. Even after trying to fight it and already spending thousands of dollars already, our palm tree expert has said, "Give up the fight and cut them down." The North Shore is completely infested and is now a massive nest for CRB to spread from. I do understand UH will receive these funds for research, but research should have been done 12 years ago. Right now, we need the funds for action. This has been researched and information from Guam. And we need to lean into those research and check out the pros and cons. If we don't kill the nest where these CRB are spreading from, they will end up on the outer islands. There are several local companies creating traps for CRB. And I beg the legislators and this committee member, and the committee members to support this bill and to look into these companies. Your residents need your help with this. Action is now, and this could be an awful snowball effect to our, the beauty of the islands, our local food supply, local farmers, and the bee population. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Let me just state that in looking at the bill, the money's been parcelling out. $15,000 for training, tree trimmers for landscaping industry, $160,000 for subsidizing canopy treatments for residential palm owners, money for extending deployment of coconut rhinoceros beetle response teams, $250,000 to perform canine inspections for coconut rhinoceros beetles, more money for subsidizing container fumigants. more money for subsidizing container fumigation, and two hundred thousand full-time equivalent positions for biocontrol research. So hopefully, the money is going to attack the problem and not necessarily for research. But we will certainly take that under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? We do have like twenty people that have sent in testimony, but I don't see any that is wanting to testify. Members, questions?
Want to hear from the agriculture? I was on TV, yeah?
Okay.
Department of Agriculture.
Department of Agriculture.
How's it? Hey, only one quick question. I know there's conflicting testimony and information that was going around. How much money do we have? I already know that we didn't spend them all. How much money we currently have in agriculture to fight this issue that we're just talking about right now with getting funding? How much money did we ever spend on this getting rid of the rhinoceros beetle and other invasive species?
Thank you for the questions, Senator Povella. I'm gonna be honest. I either stand in because my boss, Darcy, is actually out on leave. I'll go get the answers for you and I'll go ask, talk to Chair and get those questions for you and get back to you if that's possible.
Yeah, just a percent because I thought we gave you guys like ten million dollars and you guys don't even spend like three pennies on the project.
So far. But let me go find out for you guaranteed time.
Okay, brother, thank you.
Okay, can I just recommend, Department? When you folks come in and you know this has been on the agenda, can you guys prepare with the information? And if you don't have?
Yeah, not a problem.
Because, yeah, it's a waste of our time to have to go through all of this and then not information.
Totally, I understand.
Yeah, what happened to your director?
Darcy is actually out on leave.
No, how about your director? She's the director of the department?
Oh, Chair Heard? I'm not sure where she's at. I'm actually on the Big Island.
Okay.
She never heard of the meeting.
Okay, quick, okay.
U H, please. U H.
We have a two forty-five. Guys, so.
So while you walk up, are you guys equipped to manage all of the programs described in this bill? Or are these functions more in line with what D O A does? And how would you guys coordinate the efforts with D O A? They're doing some stuff, you guys are wanting to do this. You know, again, you know, money's all over the place. How do we do a concerted effort together? Anybody?
Good afternoon, my name is Michael Melzer. I'm a researcher at the University of Hawaii College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources. Yes, it's a multifaceted approach and we need a multi-agency approach. I think what these funds are going to be helpful for is expanding beyond just U H doing work, but actually the landscapers, the arbers, the people who are in the trees every day. So we are capable of managing that, you know, if necessary, I guess. We have done large contracts with tree trimmers, with landscapes professionals.
So would your division, if we took them away from D O A, would you guys be able to handle the whole thing and we just threw it on your guys' lap?
I don't know if I can answer that question. I, yeah.
Because we haven't gotten anywhere there, so. Anyway, if you guys think about it, not a snow, but yeah.
We do, yeah, we collaborate with each D O A.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Okay, anybody else, any other questions?
So, yeah, so I live in Mililani and I did find a rhinoceros beetle. Thankfully, it was only one and it was in the air when I caught it. So it didn't spread. But do you let the communities know where you're finding the infestations?
Yes, we have, thank you for the question, on our website. We haven't, they didn't matter.
Nobody knows to go to your website. Can you guys report it in the paper or some other way? We have, Mililani Town has an association. You can write to the association. I'm sure other communities have associations, but you're not telling people. We're not aware. So we're not looking forward to trying, you know, fix it in our communities anyway.
I would say our outreach staff are prevalent at a lot of neighborhood board meetings and when invited, we go there. Typically, when the beetle shows up in a new neighborhood, we will flood the neighborhood with flyers. So you might have gotten a flyer when we first found CRB in Mililani, probably back in around twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
I wasn't born.
Apologies.
No, I'm just saying that that's a long time ago. So where is it now? You need to keep the public aware so that we can be on the lookout to help you guys.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
Chair, quick follow up. Can you guys just send us your website on just the coconut rhinoceros beetle? Of just that, just one file where we send them? And then, you know, we could push it out from our office to kind of get into our communities and our associations versus you guys waiting for it to happen and then slam the flyers. Send, can you send it to all of our offices that are wanting them auto push out as well?
Because we can put it in our newsletter.
Yeah, we have a big outreach, that would be super helpful.
For the record, it's CRB Hawaii.org, so.
Yeah, just send them to us, just send them to us.
A one-page thing.
Yeah, just one page.
About what these people should do.
With a QR code and. So Senator Kim, can I just follow up one more with agriculture?
We have a two forty-five, I've got two more items on the agenda.
Oh, yes. Just one quick one.
Go ahead.
Please, sorry. I'll try to talk fast, see if you come on fast.
Question, what's the question?
The question is that out of the one point one million contract removal of the trees had already been destroyed on Oahu. It was removed six hundred trees on Oahu and three hundred on Kauai. Was that already done because the trees was dead or? I don't know, that's the question.
Okay, we'll send it to them, we'll send the questions to them.
Okay, I'll see if Heard heard.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Okay, we are going to the next item. Senate Bill six five seven relating to the Center for Climate Resilient Development. Appropriates funds for the School of Ocean and Earth Science Technology in the University of Hawaii. And we have Don Cheng for D L N R. Okay, followed by Department of Health.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Committee members. Michael Kane, on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. To be brief, we stand in strong support of this bill. We rely on the data that comes out of the center in helping us make decisions and recommendations on projects for the legislature. And they rely on federal funds, which, as we know, are not always reliable. If I can give one example, we've learned within the past year that in Waikiki, one of the big threats we're facing is groundwater inundation. So we've been watching the sea, watching rising seas, and the greater danger might be below us. That data, that information came out of the research the center did, and it will impact the recommendations we make. Thank you very much.
And the three million dollars should come from where?
Could I defer to the university on where that might come from? We support it, but I am not in charge of the budget.
Okay, but you guys are supporting it.
Correct.
So, yeah, you're supporting it, it's got to come somewhere.
Okay.
Okay, next. Department of Environmental Health Administration, State Department of Health. Mary Alice. Chip Fletcher.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Chip Fletcher. I'm the interim dean of the School of Ocean and Earth Science and Technology. Senator, Chair Gabbard, thank you. Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kidani, thank you for this opportunity. In a nutshell, this bill would solidify funding for the research team that models sea level rise impacts here in Hawaii. And right now, there are eight different laws and policies around the state that rely on our data that also indicate that data needs to be updated on a regular basis. Thank you.
Is this part of the university's budget?
No.
No, so where do you think this money should come from?
Possibly a thread from the T A T. My understanding is the T A T goes entirely into the general fund?
No, it doesn't go entirely.
Okay, that, I misunderstand.
It used to go part of it directly to H T A, but I guess it does go I L I N, right?
Yeah.
The T A Ts?
Not all, yeah.
Not some of them.
Anyway, pulling off a thread from that.
Everybody wants the money from T A T. So if it comes out of the U H budget, then you're not in favor of this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Mariah? Yoshizu? Let's see if there's anybody else. Is there anybody else here wishing to testify? Hold on, let me make sure. Okay, go ahead.
Aloha, Chair. Angela Melody Young testifying in strong support. So to appropriate funds to establish and operate the Center for Climate Resilient Development at the University of Hawaii. I think this will help students researching, developing, and promoting strategies to build resilience within communities against the impacts of climate change so that they will be equipped for a career in such a topic. The center could expand interdisciplinary approach and create an intersection of a combination of studies of different topics, such as climate science, environmental science, engineering, economics, social sciences, to develop policy implementation to face the complex challenges of climate change. And this can also help to build out careers for our future generation to address underlying issues of pollution and our planet. We can also get the students to testify to provide research as a source of supply for testimonies. The center can help them study climate and environmental risks and hazard assessments and how it intersects with policymaking and so that they are more equipped to be able to provide research to influence perhaps policymaking. And the kind of policy guidelines that students can help with would include strategies for implementation for sustainable infrastructure, zoning codes for D P P for geographic boundaries for future setback limits of how close housing can be built to the ocean as it relates to climate change. And then also emergency disaster preparedness, ecosystem restoration, and policies to mitigate greenhouse gas emissions to limit further climate change by accomplishing climate action goals for a brighter future and a more environmentally friendly future.
Thank you, Angela. Anybody else wishing to testify? Not members, any questions? Okay, if not.
U H.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so Senator Kim was saying, so the money that's going to go into this is coming out of the university's Hawaii's budget?
No, I'm not asking for it to come out of the U H budget.
Okay, so do we know where it's going to come from?
My suggestion was a thread of the T A T.
The reason why I bring this up, and I'm going to be as serious as I can, yeah? You guys tax using money, keep continuing to bring money and, you know, do this climate change, sea level rise, and everything like that. This is just another way of tax or money to be spent on something that the data that you guys have also have counter data. Data that says what you guys are trying to prove has not been proven to sea level rising. Give you an example, Salt Lake, they said the thing was rising, that the buildings was going to end up in the ocean, in the water. Years went by, never happened. Same thing with the ice caps was going to cover the earth. Ten years later, never happened, taxes went up. Everything that we're talking about here, the money that you want, the money that you wish you can have, there's really no scientific data that you guys have that can counter the same thing that you guys are bringing before us. That's the thing, you guys keep coming before us, you guys like climate change money. But where is the solution? How much money did the governor get for climate change? What did it change the climate? So I just only want to ask. If you guys come with this data, you guys got to be outside, that's all.
Thank you for, Senator.
Thank you, may I address that?
Really quick, we've got thirty seconds.
So two hundred and forty climate scientists put out a report three years ago showing that Earth's entire ice system is melting and the ocean is thermally expanding. They identify that this is a problem that will continue for thousands of years. And there's no way to stop it at this point. It's a reality on our coastlines. And we need to understand the impacts of this. There are multiple types of impacts. Groundwater system rises, coastal erosion takes place, our stormwater drainage systems that rely on gravity no longer operate. All of this data is critical to designing our communities of the future.
Thanks.
And I get fifteen hundred counter dick debt. So I will bring your data, you bring my data.
I think what he's saying is there's impacts to the people currently on their lives. So that should be studied as well. But let me just also state that the T A T goes into the general fund. How do you think we fund everything? How do you think we fund?
I understand that.
That's part of the money that goes into the general fund.
I understand that, it's a difficult decision.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go, the last item. Senate Bill eleven fifty-four relating to health requires University of Hawaii Johnny Burns School of Medicine to construct, establish, and operate a disease and environmental toxin testing laboratory to test samples submitted by the public for disease, water, air, soil, et cetera. And we have Department of Health? Not here?
Yes.
Okay, please come up. And then we're going to have the deputy for Attorney General and the Dean of Japson. We have three minutes, people. We're going to, they're going to cut us off.
Chair Kim, Chair Gabbard, Vice Chair and Senators, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Ed Desmond, I'm a state laboratories administrator. We are commenting on this bill. I have some comments I'd like to emphasize, and that is that some of these services are already available. For example, for the testing of human samples, this is part of our system of clinical medicine that physicians assess patients' symptoms and request laboratory testing. And then when they receive the results, they make treatment decisions so that there is an alternative system already for this. For the environmental samples, testing is already available. At the state laboratory, we test water and food samples. And so we're testing for pesticide residues, lead, and arsenic, and soon to be testing for PFAS compounds. So that type of testing is already available.
Already at your department?
But I wanted to point out that for this bill envisions a patient bringing in a sample for testing. And for all the tests that we do, we do a literature review of the best methods. We buy the instrumentation that's needed. We prepare standard operating procedures. We develop quality systems. We subscribe to proficiency testing systems. We train people and evaluate their competency. So if someone brings in a sample and say, I want to test for this new toxin, it's not so simple.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, A G's office, quick? Statewide, Peter? Okay, got it. Okay, Japson? Not here?
No idea.
Okay, well, they don't feel that it belongs in their department. Anyone else in person? Let's see, Anthony Chance? And then Alan Burdock on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, Vice Chair. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm in support of this. Obviously, it is important. Again, my name's Anthony Chance. I'm the CEO and founder of Huo Ho'ua. We are starting a forty-four acre farm, urban farm, in Waipahu right now to feed tens of thousands of people. We need to know what the soil contains. Right now, we would have to send off island to find out if it's safe to plant in this area. We have already started. We had our first workday last month. So we are in support of this bill.
Did you folks check with Department of Health? He says those testings are already there.
We were unaware that the testing, we were told that there's no soil testing in Hawaii. We checked with our sources at Bayer.
Please check with them.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Did you folks do?
But no soil testing. Yes, and that's what we need soil testing.
Thank you, on Zoom, please. Jamie?
Is that you, Jamie? Test in Zoom, testifier?
Jimmy's not available, but the person from Japson is here.
Okay. Alan? Steve?
Aloha.
Can you tell us your name?
My name is Steve Ward. I'm the interim associate dean for research at Japson. So we. I'm sorry, I'm very unfamiliar with committee meetings like this, so.
Please proceed.
The, we submitted test. The, we said submitted testimony, we are against this bill. It would cost a tremendous amount of money to refit our laboratories to do this. We don't have the expertise to do soil. We are focused on education and medical research. It would not be appropriate for our medical school to do this. We serve the community many different ways, but this is not one that we are set up to do.
Okay, appreciate your testimony. I did read it and, and listening to Department of Health that they can do it. So hopefully we'll be able to resolve this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Members, we have a hard stop, so we're going to have to roll decision making for the Higher Education Committee. We're going to roll decision making to Monday, the 2nd of February at 3:00 PM in room 229. It's the 3rd? No, it's the 2nd. January 2nd. It is the 3rd? Tuesday is the 3rd?
Tuesday is the 4th.
Okay, no, mine is Tuesday. We're going to do Tuesday. I'm sorry, February 4th for us.
Oh, for you.
And then you guys are going to do it.
Monday, Monday.
We can do it separately. We're just going to have to have the state recommendation. Yes. Okay. Do you want to announce yours?
Yeah, for AENR decision making on these measures will be on Monday, February 3rd at 1:06 PM here in room 224.
Okay, with that, we are.
Okay, AEN and AEN Committee, we're going to roll the today's 155 agenda with decision making here in room 24. We will be rolling that decision making until Monday, February 3rd at 1:06 PM here in room 224. Thank you.